This conference will now be recorded.
Hello, everybody. This is one rainy afternoon, but thank heavens for the rain. The media saying we've got three inches. I bet they didn't count today's rain. So let's all be pleased and hope for the best things. But it is now 6:31 PM. We will begin our Thursday special meeting of the Rome Council. And for a special meeting, we do need four council people, which we actually have here. But Shannon, you want to do a roll call, please?
Sure. Councilmember McCabe? Councilmember Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Priest?
Here.
Councilmember Ethan?
Here.
And Councilmember Majors?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, we'll move on to start our public presentation and input. I believe we have four speakers tonight. Shannon, you want to do your thing?
Yes, ma'am. The first speaker is Patricia Mitchell. Ms. Mitchell, when you're ready, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Very good. My name is Patricia Mitchell, mayor and council. Since before they were elected last November, both mayor Joanne Wilson and council Ashley Majors have repeatedly called for civility on social media, publicly in council and on Facebook. In recent days, current council and their associates engaged in a frenzy of personal attacks and name-calling, not only of challenger candidates, but private individuals as well. Even the former mayor, Assistant Fire Chief, jumped into the fray, apparently undeterred by Section 4 of the manual she has claimed to have written. In response to one of council Sam Ethan's tirades, a contributor wrote, and I quote, "Here, maybe y'all within the city council will read. Y'all are the most embarrassing bunch of ASSHATS I think I've ever seen hold a public office. I could only imagine what might get done for the city of Rome if the council members would spend all the time being constructive instead of throwing insults at one another on social media. Beyond embarrassing, y'all are a joke." Unquote. You, Sam Ethan, have the audacity to demand a report from Mayor Wilson. It's not her leadership in question, it's yours. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Shirley Mize. Ms. Mize, when you're ready.
Good evening, mayor and council. This is Shirley Mize. I live at 170 Russell. Please look at your agenda package of today's agenda for Exhibit A, Physical Year 2020-2021 Budget Amendments to Show Excessive Spending to Deplete Line Items Non-Spending Expenditures. From the Local Government Code Title Finances, Subtitle Municipal Finances, Chapter Municipal Budget, Adopt a Budget. After final approval of the budget, the governing body may spend municipal funds only in strict compliance with the budget, except in an emergency. The governing body may authorize an emergency expenditure as an amendment to the original budget only in a case of a grave public necessity to meet an unusual and unforeseen condition that could not have been included in the original budget through the use of reasonable, delinquent... No, it's diligent, I'm sorry. Thought and attention. If the governing body amends the original budget to them to meet an emergency, the governing body shall file a copy of its order or resolution amending the budget with the municipal clerk, and the clerk shall attach the copy to the original budget. Every budget item in Rome, Texas' final budget, if not used, will need to be carried over to the next year's budget unless that line item on the budget has been removed or discontinued as a budget item. Rome, Texas, is a limited city on its funding every year, and this council needs to do above and beyond the job of making sure that each dollar spent is needed or necessary for the best interest of Rome and its taxpayers. I ask that you not vote for allowing this new proposal amendment budget to be passed at this time on the final budget of the 2020-2021 for the Rome, Texas, as it is not an emergency item, and that the unspent funds be carried over to the next year's budget. Lease Extension, Current City Hall. Time and money in Rome, Texas is limited, and we, as a whole, need to be protected in any lease from losing monthly, yearly of lease funds because of the unknown future today. In reviewing what is needed for our housing of city employees, please consider, in the case something changes in time and in location, that the lease does not get a lock-in to...
Ma'am, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Tommy Ethan.
Tommy, you may be muted.
Sorry about that. I would like to save mine for Agenda Item E, please.
Mayor?
Go ahead, Cynthia.
It's Shannon. I'm asking you, are you okay with her speaking on Agenda Item E, or do you want her to speak now?
It would be better to speak now, but if she chooses to wait, that's certainly her call.
Okay, I'd like to wait, please. Thank you.
Okay, next up is Kathy Coffey.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Coffey, and I live at 1102 Mountain Lane. These are my personal opinions as a Rome citizen. The words transparency, honesty, and integrity have been thrown around in campaigning these last few weeks. I would like to add ethical or moral. There was a post on Facebook making a point to stop fighting and realize what's important. She described a horrific accident in which someone lost their life. First responders were there to hold her hand and hear her last words on this earth. The responders' faces were the last one she saw, the accident victim saw, not her loved ones. This put things in perspective for many of us. She stated how unproductive it is to tear down our community on social media. The takeaway from this post from a candidate's wife or the candidate, they seem to be one and the same, was, "If you were in politics for 10 years, why was nothing done? Someone died, and that's your response?" There has been talk that the council does not stand up for the mayor. Respect is earned, not given. Maybe the mayor should stand up for her council. What does it say about a mayor who introduces herself to the owner of a vacant lot as the mayor of Rome? Can I have your permission to put up Robinson Walker and White signs on your property? Wouldn't an ethical mayor ask for McCabe, Ty, and Priest also? All three incumbents have introduced themselves on social media and explained in detail what's been done and what will be done. They have been attacked and spoken of negatively. All three have responded with honesty and integrity. The three candidates have said nothing other than, "Vote for me. I'll bring in business, fix roads, and water." But not one of them has gone into detail what businesses or a plan to accomplish any of these plans. Robinson, Walker, and White do not respond to any citizen's questions. Why? Rome has been criticized for not being pro-veteran. What does it say when the commander in chief of the Rome veterans attacks a fellow veteran on council, questioning his time in service and insinuating what he did is false? Wouldn't a commander in chief already know the definition of military terms? Wouldn't an ethical commander in chief ask her questions in person and not try to humiliate him on social media? His response to her was very precise and dignified. Everybody has been negative on social media. Quit blaming one or the other. We've all done it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mayor, that is my list.
Okay, thank you very much. And I want to start with announcements like I just mentioned. We've had three inches of rain, so we can't complain about a drought anymore. Secondly, I was approached by a spouse of one of the council members, and they told me if I would take a strong stand, we would get rid of all the negativity that's coming from Facebook. I have tried and tried to pass that on at each meeting. Here is my plea again. Can we all get along? Can we quit doing Facebook negatively? If you want to show your cat or dog or your uncle that's sitting in a rocking chair, that's okay. Facebook should not be the work of the devil, and it has just been really bad. So I hope that the spouse that confronted me sees what my position is and how it has always been. Use Facebook if you like, but use it productively. Secondly, Rome Best Value Pharmacy now has the Johnson &amp; Johnson COVID shots available. You have to have an appointment, but you can register for an appointment at their website, which is mybestvaluerx, all-run-together, small letters, dot com. And like I say, it is the Johnson &amp; Johnson, which is the one shot. But pass the word along if you have anybody that is looking for where to go get a shot. Thirdly, I guess I came count tonight. Rome Senior Citizen Luncheon is back at Martian Margarita in Aurora. Smoking windmill Jason DuBois and Tony Wheeler have made their facility available at no cost for seniors, and we're meeting every Monday at noon. And please join us, no matter how old you are. We'd love to have you. We do ask you bring a covered dish. That's all the announcements I have, so we'll move right along into the consent agenda.
Mayor, can I make an announcement?
Sure.
I just want to... And I know we're going to speak on our social media policy, but as well as to speak on to Kathy Coffey. But I would like to address the negativity that I would like for it to stop, as well as even the negativity with phone calls that have been, you know, to speak of. It has been addressed to disability, even to myself, with our superintendent and principals on the line. That was humiliation. But just across the board, I think we need to respect our... As I've said before, we should just pause and think what we do and their future businesses coming in, developers that listen to what is going on within our community and the current businesses that want to take pride and leadership within Rome, and we should as well. So just everyone, let's just stop and think what we're doing and take pride within our community.
Thank you, Ashley. And I'll finish my announcements, which I didn't turn the page. Election Day is Saturday, May the 1st. Rome Community Center, 7 to 7. For those of you who've not had a chance to vote yet. Wednesday, May the 12th, is a special council meeting to canvass the May 1st election votes. And mark your calendar. The normal meeting for May 13th has been canceled. So May the 12th, and then we'll skip to May 27th for the next regular council meeting. Okay, then we'll move to the consent agenda.
Wait, 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 wait. Before you get going too far, I'd like to propose that we move Item R out of executive session.
Which is? Which is personnel?
Personnel, police chief. I'd like to move that out of executive session because in the weekly report, I see a phrase that says, she, referring to the mayor, has advised that she will hold off making a recommendation to council until after the election for the police chief. And if we're not making an appointment, then we need to have a discussion about it, and it needs to be public. So I'd like to move R out of executive session.
Does anyone have an objection to that?
I do.
Josh, your hands. Okay. Josh, it's not okay. Ashley?
I think it needs to stay in executive session. I have an objection. It needs to stay in executive session so we can speak about it, especially with Carvin.
But if there's no appointment made, then there is no personnel to discuss it with whom to discuss it or to discuss.
But we could...
Therefore, it doesn't qualify for executive session.
Councilmembers, and I'm going to have to disagree with you. This one has been properly posted, and you can actually discuss the process of filling the position. It doesn't require to actually have a person either appointed or to be discussed. You can discuss the process.
But we can't discuss that process in public?
It's not only a change, Sam, for public.
I'm asking the attorney, can we discuss that process publicly?
Well, the process is actually not posted. The mayor is correct. It's not posted for public discussion. So the only thing that you've posted tonight is for an executive session to discuss the... Well, to discuss the appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment, et cetera, under 551074.
And based upon, let's see, what did you... I want to get the details of what you just said of... You said, let me reading it. The appointment and the evaluation, okay? I want to discuss how the evaluation was done and the timing, because this is a special meeting that we're having for the express purpose of appointing that police chief. Okay, so, I mean, the whole point of this meeting being a special meeting, we should have had this meeting a week ago, but we had it this tonight so that they could do the evaluation. Okay? And so if we're not going to have an appointment, then we need to discuss why we're not having the appointment. Okay? And why we had a committee put together and the results of that committee? I mean, why is the appointment not being made? I want that answered publicly of why the appointment is not being made tonight.
Again, that particular topic is not posted on the agenda for tonight's discussion.
But Carvin, if I may, it will be discussed in executive session.
Yes, you do have an executive session posted, and you can go into executive session, and that topic can be discussed.
Citizens deserve to know why the appointment's not being made tonight. It's called transparency. Why is it not being made tonight?
Sam, you need to have, first of all, you need to have respect to Carvin, since he's our attorney. And, I mean, he's telling you the reason why. We're going into executive session. You're going to hear why we had an quorum. I mean, we had...
Ashley, I have respect for the attorney. I also have respect for...
I don't need a reason why I'm having an executive session. Listen to our attorney. So we're doing an executive session. We're not coming out of it. Let's move on. Quit arguing with the man. So it's an executive session. So listen to, it's that easy. Let's move on to it. We're not going to have a five-hour-long meeting. He's telling you the reason why.
Okay, let's move on to the consent agenda. We have the minutes of city council regular session dated April the 8th. Discussion and any necessary action regarding amendment adoption of Change 1, General Provisions of the City Municipal Code of Ordinances. Discussion and any necessary action regarding repealing Resolution And lastly, discussion and any necessary action regarding Rome Fire Rescues 2021 CPR/AED Initiative. Does anybody want to pull any of those off to discuss in specifics?
I'd like to pull C.
Okay. And what do you want to discuss on C, sir?
I want to know why we're even discussing it. Was there some use of that resolution recently made?
There was...
Why is it on the agenda?
It was looked at recently and determined to probably limit freedom of speech. And so a determination was made, if you guys agree, to delete that resolution. No further action would happen other than just deleting. Yes, Carvin?
I would suggest you go ahead and finish the consent agenda. If they're willing to vote on A, B, and D, let's go ahead and get the vote on those items, and then take up Item C as a discussion item next.
Okay. Does anybody have anything for A, B, or D, Cynthia?
Elaine?
Yes, Elaine.
I just wanted to check on the minutes. There was a time when we came out of executive session. It said that we reconvened at 10:13 PM. And if you go to the next page, it said we adjourned at 9:16. I don't think that's right.
That's a typo. Can you tell me what page that is so I can look at that?
Yes, ma'am. It's on page 10 of 60 or page 5 of 6 of the...
Okay, I'm sorry. The adjourn was at 10:16. We came out at 10:13, and we adjourned at 10:16.
Okay.
Once again, at this point, you just need to take the item off the consent agenda, and it becomes the next item for discussion. So now I understand we've taken A and C off the consent agenda. So if someone would like to make a motion to approve B and D, that would be the next action.
Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve... Let me get my numbers right. B and D. Am I correct, form? Did I screw that one up?
That's correct, mayor.
Yes, okay. B and D. Okay, we've had a motion in a second. And Shannon, please do a vote call.
Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Councilmember Ty?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Priest?
Aye.
Councilmember Ethan? You're muted.
Aye.
Thank you. And Councilmember Majors?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Okay, now, Carvin, if I'm not correct, we go back now and revisit the A, which was minutes of city council regular session dated April the 8th. And there's a discrepancy in time. And Shannon, you want to just address that? That we can correct it, or what do you propose?
I will correct the adjournment time to 10:16.
Okay, Elaine, will that work for you? Okay, anybody else want to discuss anything on that? Okay, so Shannon will do her magic and fix that.
And mayor, we will need a separate motion on Item A.
Okay, I apologize. Do I hear a motion that we accept the change coming to the minutes?
I make a motion.
And do I hear a second? Well, Elaine, Elaine's got a second. Okay, so Shannon, if you'll do a roll call again, please.
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Councilmember Ty?
Aye.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Priest?
Aye.
Councilmember Ethan?
Aye.
Councilmember Majors?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Okay, now we're moving down to Item C. Discussion and any necessary action regarding repealing Resolution Sam, you want to address that again?
Yes, but it's indicating here that it was brought forward by the mayor and the city administrator. Why do you bring that forward now? I mean, was there something that happened that drove this?
No, sir. It was during political season. This particular resolution has been around since 2011. And as it was being looked at, we involved our city attorney, who said the wording as such and the resolution as such could be restrictive to public speak. And because it... And have you read the resolution, Sam?
I have.
How?
I originally read it back in 16.
Do you see any reason to not repeal it?
Well, as was originally explained to me by our attorney in 2016, or 2015, that the point of the resolution was to prevent the city of Rome supporting any candidate, so that there could be no official representation by the city for a candidate, and that was the purpose. Now, the wording seems okay to me. I don't know what may be illegal or immoral or wrong with the wording. I am not an attorney. I know that back in 2015, there was discussion that... Or in 2016, there was discussion that we couldn't have a debate in City Hall or in the community center. But it was determined we could because it was not the city of Rome that was promoting any particular candidate. Therefore, it wasn't in violation of the resolution. I was just curious, I mean, this seems like odd timing right now, you know, two days before the election, that we would be visiting this resolution. That's what I was asking, if anything had happened.
No, sir.
Did someone from the city, like, use the resolution to say, to tell someone they couldn't talk?
No. We've looked at the resolution, Carvin reviewed it, and he says, "Oh, my goodness, that's probably not a good resolution." And as Cynthia and I discussed it, it really has no bearing on current events. Now, the fact the election is coming up in two days had absolutely no bearing on it.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes, sir.
But my description of what the original intention was of to make certain that the city doesn't support any particular candidate is, instead of repealing it, I mean, is there some modification we could make to it? Because I think that's an excellent idea, that the city cannot endorse any candidate.
That is actually a correct statement of the law.
Oh, so there's already a law saying that?
Yeah, state statute would prohibit the city from endorsing candidates and using public monies to support any candidate, including public assets. When I read the ordinance, my reaction was that it appeared to give the city the discretion to prohibit content of speech on public property. And as a general rule, that is something we should not be in the business of doing.
I agree with that.
We should not be regulating content. So the ordinance that I was... We should not be regulating content. So the ordinance that I was reviewing was actually approved in 2011. So I'm not a hundred percent sure we're talking about the same ordinance. You, you're referring to one in 2015 and I'm not.
Oh, no, sir. It was referenced in 2015.
Okay, all right. Well, the one that I looked at, when I just read, my, my reading of it was it would not be something that I would be comfortable advising the city to attempt to enforce. Uh, because it did put the city in the business of regulating speech content. And I, I don't think that is a good position for the city to be in. So my recommendation, rather than having an ordinance on the books that I didn't think was advisable, I thought the best process, my recommendation was to go ahead and just rescind it. If we want to go back and if there's a specific, um, evil that we want to address, uh, then, then I think we can address that with a better, more appropriate tool than that one that was drafted in 2011.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? Okay, we'll move on to the regular session.
Mayor, Councilmember McCabe has his hand up.
I'm sorry, Josh. You're gonna have to throw spitballs at me or something.
It'll be hard to do it through the computer. Um, so Sam, I guess I was reading this a little bit differently than what you were. Um, to me, it's like this, this, uh, resolution was stopping people from using city property to campaign on. So, Carvin, if, correct me if I'm wrong, if we repeal this, that means nobody could take action against, say, private citizens campaigning in the city park? Is that what you're saying if we repeal this?
That, I believe that's actually the current state of the law, which I believe we would find ourselves potentially sued if we tried to stop citizens from discussing political matters or having political rallies in a, in a public forum. And, and so that was my general concern. I thought that, that resolution was possibly poorly drafted. And, and my reading of it was I thought it, it created a dilemma for the city. We generally want to enforce our ordinances, ordinances as, and resolutions as they're drafted. But that one, I was probably going to have to advise the city administrator, no, we don't want to enforce that one as drafted.
So with that, I guess, uh, the other part of it I read was that i- if you're a member of the city, say, City Council, um, we couldn't use city property to campaign. So is it state law that City Council members can use city property to, like, a public park to campaign? Is that?
No, I don't think that's a problem. I don't think that's a violation of law. I think it would be a violation of law to use public assets, to use a, a city vehicle with a sign on the side of it or something like that, or to, you know, use the city property to post things. But, you know, having a public gathering and having a political event, I do not think is barred.
Okay. Does that be covered under First Amendment, correct?
Correct.
All right. Thank you, Carvin.
And Mayor, we will also need to take a, a separate vote on this item too.
Okay. Do we have any more discussion? Josh, are you saying one more?
No, I'm just saying, I motion that we, uh, repeal this.
Okay, so we have, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Michelle's got a second. Okay. Shannon, do your thing.
Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Councilmember Ty?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Priest?
Aye.
Councilmember Ethan?
Aye.
Councilmember Majors?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, now we're going to move into regular session, old business, item E. And Tommy, you wanted to speak before or after?
It's on now, six before.
Before.
Good evening to all. My name is Tommy Ethan. I live at 1107 Mount Lane. I would like to discuss going back to in-house meetings. I do not approve of going back yet. The reasons I don't want to go back to the way it was is that with social distancing, one, we are unable to get many citizens in the room. Two, we do not yet have the ability to stream live meetings. Three, how will people that aren't in the room be able to provide citizen presentations? You are violating the spirit of the Open Meetings Act. Please tell me you are not suggesting we don't follow social distancing. Thank you for your time.
Okay, we're back in our regular session, still on item E. Ashley, it shows you as the action person.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. So before I get started, just to answer Tommy's questions and then I'll read. Um, yes, we could, um, have in-person, uh, have open meetings and have citizen presentation with them calling in. And that, as we have discussed in previous meetings, we know that certain council members are concerned about COVID and holding in-person meetings. However, they have been seen out at open forums campaigning without masks on. I suggest we return to in-person meetings recommended with precautions. I make a motion that council members return with, to in-person meetings with proper precautions. So, council members, I make a motion that we return to in-person meetings.
Okay, we have a discussion. We're ready for a motion to bring this to a vote. Does anyone want to bring a motion?
Mayor, we have a motion with Councilmember Majors made. We need a second.
Actually, okay, I apologize on that. So we're looking for a second.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, we're still discussing. Nobody wants it, but all right, we're still discussing. We are the, one of the only cities in DFW that are not in, that are not to in-person meetings. Um, there's only one that is just in, um, but either they're doing in-person, either, um, since everybody, especially in our city, loves Facebook, they're holding, um, open meetings by doing Facebook Lives. I know that we are doing, um, so they're holding Facebook Lives and citizens are watching the, um, city councils by that, since we have a lot of our citizens, like I said, doing Facebook. Um, I know we, um, are doing YouTube versions. They can watch it by YouTube, um, YouTube. They can also, we can, um, do a phone where they can call in like they're doing now. So that is it. We can sit social distance apart and to have our meetings. But until Governor Abbott, um, their order, his orders are changed. But I think for us to, you know, not sit here behind a computer screen where we're not playing with our dogs, sitting in T-shirts, we need to be back to sitting with, you know, I think sitting around a table discussing these matters would be, you know, moving us in the right direction. So I know I bring it up quite frequently, but, you know, it's a new year. Let's all work together and let's go into the right direction. So.
Mayor, I'm gonna have to interrupt and suggest that the motion failed for lack of a second. So at this point, really, discussion should stop and you should move on to the next agenda item.
Well, I gave my discussion. We'll bring it up again next time. Thanks, Carvin.
Okay, we're going to move on now to our regular session, new business. Item Elfies and Frank, discussion and necessary action regarding amending Article 3.05, Dangerous and Substandard Buildings of Chapter 3 Building Regulations of the City of Rome's Municipal Code of Ordinances. Okay, uh, Cynthia, you want to take that one?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Um, as you all know, um, you have been wanting us to update our, um, ordinances to make sure that we resolve conflicting language, comply with, um, current state and federal regulations. Uh, in the case of this particular one, where we are talking about dangerous and substandard buildings, um, what we are proposing, we've been working on this for a while. What we are proposing is the, um, updated ordinance before you. And essentially what this does, it does resolve the conflicting language. It updates it according to the current state and federal, uh, regulations. The current ordinances from 1999, I believe. Um, and also it provides clarity on what those steps should be according to the law for, um, addressing these sorts of buildings within the city. So legal has reviewed this and, um, if there's, we would recommend that council would consider this, um, as updating the ordinance.
Do we have any more discussion? Oh, Ashley's got her hand up. Dan, go.
I do, because Cynthia, I am so thankful that you updated this. You know how passionate I am about our substandard buildings and getting them cleaned up because it has been long overdue that these buildings have not had anything done to them in long years. So, um, so thank you so much for doing it. So hopefully with the buildings that have boarded up windows and, and, um, so I saw that was on here and the removal process. So thank you so much, Cynthia, for working on this. I can, it was, you know, with all 19 pages, I know it was very long, tedious process. So very much appreciated. So thank you.
Okay, Michelle Ty?
Michelle.
So I was just wondering, how does this affect, um, our buildings since all of them are considered substandard?
Very good question. Cynthia, can you help?
Well, Carvin, I think, has addressed that before, so I'm going to let him handle that. When we, and, I mean, in short, when we go to update our buildings, these are things that we should be doing. But Carvin, do you want to tackle that?
Yeah, that, that is correct. I mean, we have not actually made an official determination that our building is substandard. We have been advised there are obviously issues that we need to address and some things that need to be repaired. Uh, but we have not made an official determination that we are in violation of our own ordinance.
Okay.
Is it what you need to hear, Michelle?
That's good, Michelle. So maybe that the boards have to come off the old school. Is that what you're saying, Michelle?
Well, that is a, a perfect description of the old school, so I, I don't, I don't know.
Do we have any more discussion? Okay, I'm sorry, Ashley, yes.
No, I just make a motion.
And do we have a motion to accept this amendment?
I make a motion to we accept it.
Do I hear a second? This is on the substandard building. Okay, Michelle's got a second. Okay. We have a motion in a second and Shannon's gonna do her thing now.
Councilmember McCabe? Councilmember Ty?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Priest?
Aye.
Councilmember Ethan?
Aye.
Councilmember Majors?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And so we will accept the amendment to Chapter 3, the, uh, Article 3.05 and go forward. The next item we have is G, discussion and any necessary action regarding amending Chapter 5, Fire Prevention and Protection of the City of Rome's Municipal Code of Ordinances. Chief Fitch, are you on the line? Do we have someone from the fire department online?
I thought he was going to be.
We have the assistant fire chief.
I was gonna say, we've got the assistant fire chief. Um, I, I will say what this is, is, uh, he may be on a call. I'm not, I talked with him earlier. Um, essentially what this is, is again, just updating the language, um, in the amendment and cleaning up some verbiage, um, regarding, uh, the bylaws and the current best practices.
I will add, uh, city administrator, I did review this at the chief's request and he and I did discuss it and I have approved the proposed revisions.
Thank you.
Do I have here a motion for us to accept this?
Make that motion.
Okay, do I hear a second? Elaine and Sam, so either are. And Shannon, you want to do a roll call or a vote call?
Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Councilmember Ty?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Priest?
Aye.
Councilmember Ethan?
Aye.
Councilmember Majors?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, so we'll go ahead with an amendment now that we're going to move down to Hs and Homs. Discussion and any necessary action regarding quarterly budget amendments for fiscal year 2021. Cynthia, city administrator?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, council members, as you know, we do these, um, potentially on a quarterly basis as needed. We haven't needed to, um, this past the first quarter. Um, so these are budget amendments that we're bringing to you, uh, mid-year. And as a reminder, um, there's no net effect on the fiscal year, um, budget overall. Um, so these are not increasing the bottom line budget. This is within the departments that we are making sure that, um, we're, uh, adjusting our budget to accommodate, uh, changes during the year on the budget within line items. But it has no net effect on the bottom line budget.
Any discussion? Do I hear a motion that we accept the budget amendments? I'm sorry, both of you at once. Which one wants it? Josh, you're cutting out or?
Josh said that, uh, Sam committed a motion and he would second the motion.
Okay, so we do have a motion, a second. Who made the motion? Are you two guys?
Councilmember Ethan.
Okay, and then the second was from, um, Josh McCabe, council person.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, now we are now ready for a vote. Shannon, I'm glad you came tonight.
Me too. Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Councilmember Ty?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Priest?
Aye.
Councilmember Ethan?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Majors?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
And we move on now to, if I can find out what we have in here. We want to approve and thank our annual professional municipal clerks week, which starts May the 2nd, Monday. And Cynthia, this shows you as the action person. Do you want to read the proclamation?
Okay, I can, yes. This is, um, a proclamation of the City of Rome of recognition from the City of Rome, 52nd anniversary of the Municipal Clerks Week, May 2nd through the 8th, 2021. Whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of the local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the professional clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local government, and, and whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and the agencies of government at other levels. And whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. Whereas the municipal, professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. Whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the professional municipal clerk. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the city council of the city of Rome, Texas, is hereby recognized, we may 2nd through May 8th, 2021, as the professional municipal clerks week. And further extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerk, otherwise known as our city secretary, Shannon Montgomery, and to all professional municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent.
Thank you. All of y'all think if we didn't have Shannon, wherever would we be? And next week is kind of her week, but it wouldn't hurt for you to tell her tomorrow or next week, how you appreciate all the work she does. Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you, mayor.
And we'll move on now to the next item.
We probably ought to vote on that proclamation.
Oh geez, I thought we could just say how good she did. Well, Shannon, hold on, we may not pass it. So do, do a roll call, please, ma'am.
We need a motion first.
Did we not, okay, hey. Michelle is making the, and Elaine seconded. So we have a motion in a second, whether or not we want to thank Shannon for all of her work. So Shannon, go to work, do a roll call.
Councilmember McCabe.
Aye.
Councilmember Ty.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Priest.
Aye.
Councilmember Ethan.
Shannon, thank you for everything you do. We appreciate you. I vote aye.
Thank you, sir. And councilmember Majors.
Aye, and thank you as well, Shannon.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Okay, what's the next item we have has to do with the public works. It's item J. Discussion and any necessary action regarding a proclamation for National Public Works Week, which actually it starts by the 16th through the 23rd. And we have a proclamation put together. And I don't know, Sean, are you with us?
Yes, he is.
Yes, okay. We want to recognize you and your people from the city of Rome, National Public Works Week Proclamation, May the 16th through the 23rd, 2021, stronger together. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of Rome, Texas. And whereas these infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees in all level of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, solid waste treatment, and public buildings and other structures and facilities that are essential for our citizens. And whereas it is the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the city of Rome to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest in understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective community. Whereas the year 2021 marks the 61st Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association or Canadian Public Works Association. Be it now resolved, we, the city council of the city of Rome, to hereby designate the week of May 16th through 22, 19, no, it's not 19 anymore, 2021, as National Public Works Week. We urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. Okay, do we hear any conversations or do we, do I hear a motion to accept this proclamation? Ashley? Ashley's making, okay. And do I hear Elaine seconding? Okay, Shannon, if you do not have the big head by now, because we do like what you do, would you do a roll call?
Councilmember McCabe. Councilmember Ty.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Priest.
Aye.
Councilmember Ethan.
Aye, and thank you, Sean.
Councilmember Majors.
Aye, and thank you, Sean. Is he on with us?
Yes.
Sean, we really appreciate everything you do. And you're going to get a piece of paper that tells us that. However, please understand, we all are pleased to see you taking care of so many odd jobs all the time. Thank you.
Thank y'all very much.
Okay, now we're back. Let me get my paper turned the right way.
Send item K.
The next one is item, I'm sorry, is item K. Thank you for the help. Regarding a social media policy. And Cynthia, you get the action on this one. And I think Josh and Ashley both wanted this to happen.
Yes, thank you, mayor. Councilmembers, you have before you, as you know, councilmember McCabe and the council directed me to draft this and councilmember Majors also requested that. So you have before you three different policies. One is primarily addressing the city and city employees, internal and external, and how we handle social media and our official social media outlets. Number two is social media participation best practices, which is primarily best practices for elected officials, which will be external. And then number three would be social media terms of use policy, which is primarily the rules of engagement that municipalities post on their social media sites. So that they essentially are communicating the goals of social media to encourage and promote respectful and civil debate. So you have these here before you. They have been reviewed by legal and I think they're fairly concise. And it's a fairly standard across social media for municipalities. Are there any questions?
Josh.
Yes, thank you, Cynthia. I know you've been working a long time on this. The reason why I originally asked for this is because as we depend more and more on social media, I know when businesses such as we are or businesses you work at have policies dictating on, you know, what can be put on there, who operates it, all that. So I'm glad that all this stuff is in place. Thank you again. So I would like to motion that we approve these policies.
Okay, before we ask for a second, Ashley has her hand up.
Thank you. I just had a question. I know that I did not see that, I know there was one spot in here. It said volunteers, but it left out, um, for like our board members. That was something I asked for when we had a meeting for like our, for, for instance, our park board members. So I didn't know if that was something that could be added in. So I was just concerned about that. For our, you know, that was something that I'm to see about them being transparent not as well, as well as council members. I don't know if it would cover, if that would cover as volunteers in there. Because they're not, you know, so that was something, you know, I always say pause before you post, you know, that all of us are, um, you know, we, it's, we fall underneath the first amendment rights, but we hold the, the city, um, you know, we represent the city, but as well as all of our, all of the boards. Can you add in the, can you add them into this policy?
Well, I think the idea, you know, if, if you guys are wanting to, I would, if you wanting to specifically add them in, I think across the three, the, the expectations are raised really for everyone. But in the social media participation best practices, I mean, Carvin, I'll, I'll defer to you. I, I think we probably could add in city council and, you know, volunteers or board members, city appointed board members. I'm not sure how that would be worded. Again, I think.
They're officials of the city when they're appointed to the board. So they are, they are officials of the city. They're not elected, but they're appointed officials.
So what, I didn't see it in here. Is it covered somewhere in here? Could it, or could we change it to be added in here? When I was reading, I could have missed it in all of the pages. So.
Well, I think what he's saying, and what I was saying is it's implied in the social media participation best practices.
Okay.
But is that what I'm understanding you to say, Carvin?
Yes, if, if you would like to make sure we include appointed officials within the coverage, we could certainly use that word in here. I don't think it would change the meaning, but it, it might add a layer of clarity. So I'm okay with that.
Okay. That was the only thing and Facebook is on here on page. I don't, it was on page two, but I didn't know for elected officials and board members. That was something because I think that's where we fall victims of. I don't know if that's how I say it, but.
Councilmember, yeah, it is in there. I mean, it talks about really the best practices for personal accounts for city officials, whether they're elected official or appointed, the use of official accounts. And it does say, again, the general best practices, be transparent, be judicious, be knowledgeable, be perceptive, be conversational, be excited, be valuable, be responsible. I mean, so I think that they are all in there. So, yeah, and I think across all of them, I mean, what, again, I think if I could summarize all three of the policies, they are all encouraging and promoting respectful and civil debate.
Okay. And I like, we're transparent, which we, you know, we need to uphold the city. I mean, reading everything like, you know, right now, like what was said tonight, you know, with Joanne speaking. And, you know, when, when a citizen who owns a business, you know, it was on our comprehensive plan study with me, you know, when she was humiliated on how the citizens were acting. You know, I'm glad that we're putting this into place, you know, so, um, and everything. Now, does it say something about, I saw on here about campaigning separately? What is, I'm going to read, because I just came across it. Campaigning separately, council members in official office should not use city-administered or funded social media accounts. So that means that you can't campaign on the city.
Yeah, the city accounts are the official city accounts that are driven by the administrative staff. So they're separate from politics. But then, on the other hand, on the best practices, it talks about, again, for elected officials, appointed officials, if we want to add that, the use, how you would want to try to split up your personal account from a professional account as a mayor. So for example, if, well, if you, as I'm, you've got a, you've got your personal Facebook page, I assume. So you would keep that private. That would be Ashley Majors. You would have, if you wanted to engage the public as any elected official, then you would want to use an official account. And that's going to be, you have to be mindful of First Amendment. You've got to be mindful of Open Meetings Act. And you've got to be mindful of the First Amendment when you have your professional account. And that's essentially what that is making the recommendations and helping elected officials and appointed alike make sure that they're on, doing those best practices that respect the law of open meetings, First Amendment, and Public Information Act.
Michelle tie has had her hand up for, so go, Michelle.
But the best practices for city council and elected members, if somebody violates that, there's not any teeth to that, is there? Or, I mean, I don't see that there is consequences to them violating it.
Well, I'll let Carvin answer that from a legal perspective, but right, we can't, you can't, you can't enforce this for elected officials and or appointed officials because they do have free speech. I mean, it's not like employees, for example, that's a little bit different than elected or appointed. Carvin, do you want to illuminate on that from?
I would just add to it. There's a lot, there's a big difference, not a little difference, but there's a big difference between the elected officials and the employees. We, we essentially can regulate the employees of the organization as long as the matter is not a matter of public debate. They don't lose their rights to First Amendment if it becomes a matter of public interest and public debate. So that's where it gets kind of tough for the lawyers to evaluate. But as, as far as just general matters, we can, we can regulate the employee's speech. The elected officials, guys, you're elected by the voters. They have the ultimate say. And so the city doesn't really have the authority to do anything about that. I mean, we could theoretically come up with some ideas of censure or something like that, but they honestly don't have a lot of teeth, so.
Well, and I, again, I would add, I think it's, it's really about setting that expectation. So it's setting that expectation that, listen, when you are elected and or appointed, these are some expectations. And I'm going to come back to what I've said before. I mean, we want to encourage and promote respectful and civil debate.
Carvin, can I add anything to this discussion or do I have to stay quiet?
No, mayor, you can add to it.
Okay. And again, I appreciate Carvin and Cynthia working so long and hard to get this together. But really, I don't, I'm kind of like Michelle, there's no teeth in this. And I do not feel this is something we need to spend a lot of time and money to publish a document, and Michelle, you used my word, that has no teeth and basically relies on common sense or things maybe our mother taught us. Should additional information be required for employees that's not already in our city? Should additional information be required for employees that's not already in our city personnel manual, then maybe we could do a one paragraph amendment to that. That's my two cents worth. Yes, Michelle.
Ashley, go ahead. You had your hand up.
Um, so, which I agree, Mayor, but since on this one here, since right now, um, since I've been watching everything going on social media, um, Carbon, can you help me if, say, for instance, the open meetings, if you have, you know, five people that are board members or council mem, you know, or three council members that are all debating or talking all, um, about certain subject all on social media, what, is there something that can happen to them if it's, just say, if it's, you know, a certain part, a certain board mem, you know, certain, you know, a board, certain board, um, and then a couple of council members? Is there anything that can happen? I mean, if they do sign this practice, I mean, we can't have them all, we can't remove them. I mean, we want the best for our city.
Well, first off, there, the open meetings act is a standalone act, and that has really sort of two criteria for a violation. One is that there is a gathering of a forum of the, of the governing body. So in this case, it would be three, and you're deliberating public business. And deliberation has been defined by the courts and the attorney general to include electronic communications like social media. So if three of you are engaged in social media on a topic of public business, and it hasn't been posted, that is an illegal meeting. And if you did it on purpose, it can have criminal implications. It's a class C misdemeanor, uh, or more to, to violate intentionally the, the open meetings act. So that's already in place. Hopefully, if you, if you comply with the tenets of this policy, that will never happen. You won't have that issue. But this policy really is not intended to be a restatement of the open meetings act. That's a, that's a separate provision. You guys have all got your training in that, so it's, it's sort of a separate issue. You can't hold electronic meetings of three of you discussing public business.
And Carbon, I, you might want to, um, maybe put your lawyer hat on, since you're a lawyer, um, and define the difference between, um, you know, they, people can talk about issues, um, but when it is specific public business, I mean, there's going to be a difference between that, is there not?
Well, it's what we lawyers would call a slippery slope. Um, if it's a matter of, of public expenditures, if it's a matter of public personnel, if it's a matter of public policy, uh, it gets, it gets very slippery there when you're talking about public business. So the courts have been inclined to define that very broadly. If it's a matter that the public would have interest in, and if it's a matter that would take some action, uh, or some change, you're going to spend some money, you're going to approve a policy, you're going to pass an ordinance, uh, appoint an official, you know, we've got the police chief on the agenda, you know, all those different kinds of things that you might talk about, that's public business and you're required to do it in the open, unless there's an exception.
I'm talking more of, say, say a campaign. So we're in the middle of a campaign season. So people are sharing candidates, incumbents and challengers alike are sharing their perspective on different issues.
Yeah, that's, that's not covered. So camp, political forums are not covered by the open meetings act. So you, you can have political forums, you can have political debates, you can have gatherings for those purposes, and those are not considered a governmental meeting.
Thank, thank you for answering that, cause that was my next question, just to help. I mean, cause that's right now is what citizens are complaining about, cause it's, it, there is so much negativity right now.
Well, the, the act specifically allows, it specifically has paragraphs that talk about gathering for public forums to discuss, you know, in a campaign, the issues of the day. So there, I mean, that's already contemplated in the act. But again, that's a little, that's, it's a little bit different than what this policy is aimed at. Again, this policy is a, is a high level attempt to set out some, some regulations of a very complex, uh, area of the law, first amendment law, and the governmental entity has a lot of restrictions on what we can do. We really can't regulate content. Uh, so we have to be very careful, uh, we have to use an even hand, we can't treat folks differently. So we have taken a pretty hard look at this, and we've crafted a policy that I believe will survive a challenge if someone were to legally challenge it. I think it's crafted, um, as tight as we can do it. I have to say that, you guys may have read the news, on Tuesday, our United States Supreme Court changed their mind regarding the handling of former President Trump's Twitter account. And so the, our very highest court occasionally changes their mind about the law of social media. So I have to tell you, I've done the best I can do to create a policy that I think is in accordance with the law right now and will be enforceable if someone were to challenge us, but it is a fluid area of the law and it could change.
Well, thank you. So it, I know about the first amendment, I, you know, I know it's very touchy, cause I've read over it and I, you know, went to Cynthia and stuff, but I just want us, I mean, I'm very pleased, it was just the only thing about all, you know, the city council, the board members and all of us, just to uphold for our citizens, cause they've argued, you know, or embarrassed by the actions, even by their neighbors' actions, but I think us first, um, that we need to uphold, um, our best practices, um, as council members and employees and, um, so, um, but that's it. So Cynthia, thank you for working, um, on this, so, but that was it. Just if we can add those, that would be, I would appreciate it. And if all, you know, I'll uphold my first amendment and, I mean, do the best I can, but thank you.
Okay, Elaine?
Um, I'm, I'm glad that we have these in the end, if they're not, even if they don't have, um, real teeth in some instances, they are guidelines, and I think that they, they can be beneficial to a, a standard that we want to see in our town. And so, um, I, I think it has, I think it has great value. Um, even though, like you said, Carbon, it may not have a, a big bite, it sure is, it i- it is a positive guideline and, and, um, so I, I like it. Um, the, my question is, um, for those of us that are on the city council or the elected official, those of us that are elected officials or appointed officials. So for one, I'm gathering from this, I just want some clarity, it's better for us, uh, to have our own, uh, Facebook page or whatever our, our choice of, of, um, of social media might be. And we can talk about some upcoming events and things like that with a little color commentary, whereas our official website that's managed by, uh, operations and, and our employees, those are just the facts, kind of thing. Uh, here, here is the, and, and no, no public commentary. So I, you know, I can see, and this is just food for thought, and maybe it's already been discussed and I'm just not aware of it. I'd love for the mayor to have her own website where she can do commentary on upcoming events and, and her take on it, um, uh, what her feeling is about it. Uh, so I call that color commentary, but, um, I would, I, I would like that myself. I, I just think that to have, um, our, um, our mayor have a speak out place, uh, separate from then the, what the, what we're doing on our website that is the city website. So I just think it's an opportunity, uh, and I don't know about, uh, mayor, but, you know, I always need instruction, obviously need help in, in this kind of thing. Um, but I'm sure she's got lots of folks that would help her set something up like that. But I'm just saying, I would enjoy that. I, I would be excited to see or have something like that.
Well, Mayor Protam, that's exactly what this is recommending in the best practices, that whether it's the mayor or a council person, but certainly the mayor, you know, to establish, um, their, you know, the mayor account, it would be hers, um, or his, uh, if this case may be, but if that would be their official, um, mayor Facebook page, that would be separate from the city's page.
Okay. I just think it's a great opportunity, but I really, um, I'm impressed with what you guys have worked on and, uh, the input that's come in. I just think that this is a standard, um, not only for our employees and, you know, and appointed and all that, but for us generally, I, I think it's, I think it's a good thing. And I appreciate all the work.
Anybody else? Okay, Sam?
I'd like to second Josh McCabe's motion.
Okay.
Before you do, Sam, I would like to make an amendment to include the word appointed where necessary, as Ashley suggested.
So for clarification, that's going to be in the, the title of the best practice document. So it would be social media participation best practices for city council and appointed officials.
Okay. With those changes, do we want to vote now? Anybody? Before we do? Okay, Shannon, please.
Mayor, if we could, just for the record, did we get a second on Josh's amendment?
Yes, Ashley has seconded.
Hey, I'm sorry, I missed it.
Well, hey, it happens. Okay, we're ready to vote.
Councilmember McCain?
Aye.
Councilmember Ty?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Priest?
Aye.
Councilmember Ethan?
Aye.
Councilmember Majors?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And now we're going to move on to item L, discussion and any necessary action regarding a facilities update and authorizing the city administrator to sign a lease extension for city hall. And adjoining with Cynthia on that is, uh, Mayor Protam Priest and Councilmember McCain. Cynthia, you want to start it?
Sure. Um, well, as I understood it, it was, it was twofold. It was the, um, you know, any updates or any discussion on the facilities update, um, and then also, um, looking at we, you all, as we've been looking at our facilities and different options that are out there, um, I think there seems to be, um, and I think council members seem to think there's general consensus on, um, city hall is probably going to need to go ahead and extend that lease. So, um, that's what this item is about. Elaine, I don't know if you want to go first, or Josh, uh, Councilmember McCabe, um, both of you were interested in this one.
Okay, go ahead, Elaine.
Okay, um, well, the, the first thing that, that, you know, I don't guess there's truly an update on the facilities as far as their condition, um, other than the ones that are sitting there, uh, basically, uh, you know, they're, they're probably are continuing to deteriorate somewhat, even though we try to keep them in the dry and stuff like that. I was just, you know, my, my thought was, and this is just a discussion topic, basically, is, you know, we don't really have a plan on how we can get together and really sort through the information that we have and maybe come up with a tentative plan for, um, to try to get, uh, get the buildings safe, whichever ones we decide to use, you know, and, and sort through all of that. So I didn't know if we needed to have a special meeting and just strictly talk about what we know and where we would like to head with this. And, you know, it, it may be that we're not able to save them, the, all of the old buildings. It may be that it is going to be a combination of selling, tearing down new, new ones. I mean, it, it, we don't, we don't have a plan. And I don't know how we can work that into our budget until we really have kind of an overview. So I'm, I don't know how to go about making that happen. I do know that our city administrator's got to be a part of it. I know the city council has to be a part. I know that, uh, Shane Dinsmore has got to be a part. It's his, falls under his watch and his, his, uh, department. And, um, but I would just like for us, for just a minute, to talk about how we're going to sort through this massive amount of information and stay focused on the health and safety of our staff and our citizens. You know, that's got to be the priority, you know, it's not necessarily which buildings, it's, it's what that priority is for health and safety. Um, and so I was just wondering if we could maybe talk about how we could have that kind of a, a meeting. I don't want to have all day Saturday meeting particularly, but maybe, you know, maybe hour or two or something, just to help us get there. Do we want to ask, uh, uh, Mr. Dinsmore and, uh, the mayor and, and the administrator to get together first and come up with, you know, option A, B, or C? Or do we want to all try to work on it at the same time? Well, I threw out a lot of stuff there, sorry.
Mayor Protam, so just to recap, um, I guess, I think staff's perspective in, you know, we brought, you all have asked great questions, and, um, I think you've been on a fact finding, um, mission, um, over the last year as you've been trying to pivot, and the staff has brought forward some information. We did talk quite a bit about that in the workshop. Um, I think this, from the staff's perspective, I've been thinking that we, um, have some idea of what the council is wanting to do and some consensus after that workshop. We were going to be talking more about that, um, during, um, you know, as we go forward with the budget conversations. Um, we had talked about several different items there. I think it seems to me like you all kind of ended up with police and, and fire and looking at those buildings and seeing what the options were for those, um, and looking at bringing those up to code. So, um, I mean, certainly we can continue to brainstorm, but did I, is that, is, am I understanding council's direction in that? I mean, that you guys had some direction in that and you wanted to discuss it some more during the budget conversations, specifically what we were going to do with those? The immediate needs seem to be PD and fire.
I think absolutely those have to be discussed. But no question, I can't, can't imagine having to discuss about budget without those being key topics.
Right.
Sam, do you see a need to have another meeting or wait for budget?
I think we need to have as many meetings as necessary until we have a plan on what we're going to do with, one, the police department, two, the fire department, three, where the city council and municipal court and P and Z and park and rec are going to meet? Because no, we're not going to be virtual forever. We need to have a place to meet. And the, uh, the community center is not adequate. Um, we need to have a plan. Okay? And for us, to try to put together a, a budget without a plan on each of those is irresponsible. I mean, I think those have to be on the, and if we need to have, you know, a meeting every week for the next three months, then we have a meeting every week for the next three months, because this is a priority. We have problems, we need to do something about it. We can't continue kicking the can down the road. We can't continue kicking the can down the road.
Okay, Josh?
Thank you. I'm with Sam and Elaine. I think we need to have additional meetings that we focus solely on the buildings and the budget. And I think that we need to include both the fire chief, assistant fire chief, or police chief. That way, we can all have a, a group discussion on it. Because for those of us that have sat through these budget meetings that are going to be coming up, it ain't easy just doing what we got to do as it is. And to sit here and focus, you know, solely on these two buildings, it's going to take more time, more effort to figure out what it is that they need exactly, which I know we already know. But then trying to budget going forward for that, and we definitely need their input as well. So I'm in favor of having additional meetings solely for budgeting as far as the fire department and police department buildings.
Okay, Ashley?
I'm with, let's have as many meetings necessary for the fire, police, and then y'all know that I'm wanting to rebuild the old City Hall, but I don't, I think we need to wait on renewing our lease at the current City Hall because we need to find out what we're going to do, if it's going to rebuilding the old City Hall, if we're gonna, you know, get a, you know, the old school or any going thing going further, because if we have to break our lease, it's very costly to break our lease. But we're in no means to renew our lease at this time. So I think we need to wait just a little bit longer. I know our lease is coming up, but I think we could hold, hold a special meeting, but I don't think we should do it as of this time.
Well, I guess that's a little bit different message than I had heard, but whatever the council wants to do, I mean, at this point, you know, you're talking, you know, five or six months before, you know, City Hall doesn't have a home. And whether it's City Hall, whether it's the school, whether it's a modular building, I mean, modular might be able to be fairly quickly, but in front of the school, as a council member has stated, at, at some point, I mean, I don't know, I haven't talked in the last month. I mean, as you know, you guys authorized me to go talk to the owners, and I did. At some point, I mean, what happened? So I'm just going to throw this what if, what if they lease up this building and they say, no, you can't, we're, we, we have already leased it, you haven't bid on it, and now we've leased it. And then what happens with City Hall in five or six months? Where do we go?
It seems pretty clear, Cynthia, that you're going to need to get a new lease because even if we dedicated all of our resources to the restoration of the old City Hall, it's really not feasible that it would be finished and ready to occupy by the time the lease is up.
When is, when is the lease up?
November.
Okay, but we only have to give them a 60-day, correct? Or is it 90 days?
Yeah, I mean, it's, I believe it's 60 days, but, yeah, and that's, they might give us, they might give us 60 days.
But if we're in contact with them, typically, if they wouldn't, they wouldn't, so I mean, if we hold, give us just another month, then I think, I think we have enough time out. And how long, I, I don't think, I know someone said before, doing a four, a four-year or something lease, I don't think that that's what we should do. What are you talking to them about at this time?
Well, as I explained before, I mean, they're willing to do a one- or two-year lease. I, I, I wasn't recommending a four-year lease. I would, I would never recommend a four-year lease or maybe even a three-year lease. I think a two-year lease is reasonable. If you guys are thinking you might be able to have City Hall done in a year, a year and a half, which I, I don't necessarily see that, but if you think that, then a year. I think a year or two is reasonable.
Okay. All right. I think, can we, I recommend that we hold off, if you can just, we can hold off another 30 days.
And, uh?
Oh, sorry. I didn't see anybody else hand up. I recommend we hold it off for another 30 days and not make a decision.
Okay, Elaine, is your hand, yeah, Elaine's next.
I guess my, my concern is that we need to stop and remember the process that we have to go through in order to renovate Old City Hall. I mean, making the assumption that we're, we would be looking at renovating Old City Hall and move out, move the administrative office out of rental property into that property. In order to get that building remodeled, the steps that we have to take according to the state statutes are going to take a while. In other words, we can't even go get competitive bids until we have the money in our hand to do that. And so we're, we are, we are months out being able to identify that money, because if, if it's going to be through a bond, it can't happen before November. And then we'd have to get competitive bids, and then the work would have to be done. At a very minimum, we need that, we need to rent that building for at least a year, because there's no place else for us to go. So whether, you know, if we could have, do the lease for a year with the option for year two, then I think that's probably doable. We wouldn't get locked into that second year if it was in an option as part of a one-year lease. Does that make sense? It's going to take us that long to get that building renovated. Because we have to, you know, everybody, everybody is, I'm sure, becoming familiar with what those steps are that are, that are required. It's time consuming. I mean, it, you, there is no hurry up there. You know, the state makes the rules and we have to follow them. And it's going to be, it's going to be a process. And so I do think we need to go ahead and do the one-year lease, but I, but I'd like for that second year to be an option and not a commitment.
So I think that's possible.
Because I don't want to stay, I don't want to stay there any longer than we have to. But I'm, at the same time, we've got to, we've got to have a place to be while we go through this processes.
Anybody else? Ashley?
Yes. If you could just find out what it is, usually, I think it's 85% to buy out of your lease. If you could just find out what it is, if we needed to get out of our lease and everything. And then whenever we, I wish we would have bought it back when, when it was only $157,000, because the market, the way the market is now. But back whenever we were fixing the old City Hall and we had the money, we borrowed it and spent it. But I'm with Elaine, if we could do the two-year and possibly, you know, buy out, then that's good. But if we can hold off, you know, let's do it. So, because I'm, I'm all up for moving into the old, old City Hall.
Well, yeah, so I would, I mean, again, you guys have, I've talked with them about this. So if you want to authorize me to go ahead and execute the contract with the one year with an option for an additional year, we, I can do that.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes, ma'am.
I, there's a little bit of something I want to visit about, about the old City Hall while we're on that subject. There was some confusion early on when we started talking about renovating those City Hall. And, you know, as, as we've talked about several times now, it is a priority for every city, every city councilman that's sitting at this time, because we, we canvassed, we talked about it, we, we think it has great value for our community. And so there was some confusion and that went on, some tension about trying to investigate that building. And so then we decided that it was, maybe we needed to re-educate ourselves. And so Carvin has done a good job helping us all revisit the, what we thought we knew about being a city councilperson, what we thought we knew about mayor and those responsibilities. And I think Carvin has helped us understand our duties much better. I do know that one of the things that has been outstanding and a concern to me is that there were folks that went over and looked at that building. And so we have asked who those people are so that as city council, we could understand all that, the information that was available there. And so now that we've done our educational review, we know that we should know who those folks were. And we know, we also know, Carvin has educated us that way, that knowing who they are does not prevent those folks from participating in the bid processes they want to. But we need, do need to know who they are so that when we get to the bid process, if there's anyone new in addition to those, then we have to let those new ones have the same privilege that the other, the others did. So I would like to know who those folks are.
Ashley?
I think we're getting way off topic. Can we just make a motion to let Cynthia?
No, we're not off, we're not off topic. We're talking about the building and the old building. And I have the right as a city councilperson to know who those are. And I'd like to know who those are.
Carvin, or can we just, Carvin, can you help us out here? Can we just make a motion? Is she good?
Well, there is still discussion going on right now. And I, the mayor has allowed Councilmember Priest the floor, so I think she gets to finish her discussion.
But does the mayor, I mean, we've discussed, does the mayor doesn't have to say who's went in there to look at the building? Sorry.
Well, I would, I would recommend we go into executive session to receive advice of counsel before we start addressing that issue.
And I don't think we have one thing under executive session that relates to this, but it could be for the next meeting.
Well, actually, under item P, you're allowed to consult with your attorney regarding any matter that's on the agenda. So we, we could do that.
Okay.
Well, but Carvin, before we, before we try to do that, who these people are in the, the City Hall, Old City Hall, that's all public business. Should the mayor share with the council information about public business?
Generally, yes. Yes, the mayor should, should share the matters of public business with the council.
And this is public business?
I'm going to make that assumption that it is. I mean, it's a tough, I mean, she was, she should have been visiting with friends.
As I have discussed with you and the council, when they were saying, what is your plan B for whatever, I went in there on three separate occasions with three separate people, to my knowledge, that do not know each other. My intent was not to have one of them come and fix the City Hall. My intent was to see what the estimate was to maybe fix the City Hall. Not, these people were not expressing any, you know, I'd like to bid on it, I'd like to do this. They went in as, you know, acquaintances, if that's a good term, because I was hearing, oh, it's going to cost $900,000 to redo it. I was also hearing from friends and neighbors, if you will, it shouldn't be over X. I didn't know what X was. I felt it my responsibility to determine what X was. And honest to goodness, I've given you these figures several times. It all come out within a $200,000 estimate. However, if everybody knows, God only knows how much building supplies have gone up. So in my knowledge, we're probably looking at $300,000 now instead of $250,000. And that would have to be worked through with people that know pricing much better than me. And I talked to Sean Dinsmore and told him this, this, and this, how we would go about it. He, he said, that seemed wonderful. That very same night, he thought, oh, no, it's not any good. So I'm getting mixed stories. I think the people that offered their estimate, and it was strictly an estimate, nothing we could hold them to, because we'd have to go out for formal bids and have a, there are, anybody's opportunity, it wouldn't just be to those three. I really doubt if we'd even get one bid from those three, because one of them said, we're not doing this anymore, but it's about $200,000. The other one came as a favor. So who, we don't know what we're dealing with. I think we've got first to figure out, not as much as who it was, but what do we want to do? Do we want Cynthia and company to sketch out what they'd like to see in that old building, go to an architect or a professional planner, blah, blah, blah? That's going to cost money. And I don't think we need to get into personalities at this point.
I, you know, I understand what you're saying, but I, you know, whether, whether Ashley knows or she doesn't know, but the, the, all five of us, the city council people have the right to know what you know. And, you know, you're not, you're not protecting them. I don't understand why you, you deliberately withhold information when all we're asking is, who did you talk to? You give them credibility. We can't give them credibility in our minds because you won't tell us who they are.
You don't need credibility. You need to go out for formal offers or formal bids, depending on which way you want to go with it. And I truly doubt, out of the three, hopefully we would get one to bid. I kind of doubt we'd even get anybody to bid. And they probably wouldn't have come in as an acquaintance for me unless I had said, hey, this is going no further. What do you think it would cost to bring this building back to life? ADA, the front part of the build outside, ADA, air conditioning, you know, the whole kit and caboodle. I think they made, in their best judgment, a price. What I did with that price is bring it to you guys. And what did I get for that? Oh, I think it's your cousin that's going to do it. Now, on social media, one of the people working, has a contractor, has his own business, I didn't even know the man before all this started. I mean, Elaine, you just don't know what persecution they tried to do. And I am, unless Carvin beats me over the head and tells me I have to do it, I am not giving out their names for their own personal privacy. Because it means nothing. Y'all don't want to even look at that. So why, why bother? Yes, Ashley?
Talking about persecution, the way that people attack everyone on social media, I don't think, I don't think that she should, especially talking about a building and the cost of materials. I don't think that the price of it, what they gave is what the price would be today. And I don't, I mean, I don't know, but there's no way it's going to cost. And especially with me walking it with Sean, and getting what he said and the, you know, and knowing and everything, you know, what, listening to him, you know, and saying, I mean, I don't know. So I don't think that Joanne should insight, because people will attack and maybe that the people, I mean, will go after them. So I'm with Joanne. I don't think that everyone should know.
So when we went through the training, when we went through the training on March the 20th with Carvin, and he put the information up there, one of the things that we talked about was One of the things that we talked about was, um, statute, I think it's, um, twenty-two zero twenty-four. I think that's the, the reference number. And, um, it says that the mayor has to share with the city council what she is about, the information that she has. I don't think that anybody would be persecuted for going with the mayor over there. I don't think that that's the, the, the gist of this at all. The gist of this is that the mayor has a responsibility to give us the information that she has. And, and I'm, you know, I don't know, Ashley, if you know one or all of those people. But certainly, the rest of us don't know. We would like to have the opportunity to give them credibility and not, they're, they're not under any kind of, uh, negativity at all. This is about conducting business and we need to be included in what the mayor does. And that's all I'm asking for. Mayor, I'm asking you to please share that. And, and so that we can all get on the same page here and work together.
We could have been, but I was told the council was not interested in this. Had they been interested in this, had we gone out for bids, I would have asked whatever their addresses are, be looked up, and those people be mailed a copy of the bid. But that is all I have, you know, certainly don't sit down and have coffee with them or, you know. It's not a personal thing, but that is what.
I'm, I'm not saying that.
No, but you're one of the few that's not. Yes, Ashley.
So how many other council members? I know I walked it with Michelle, but how many other ones Cynthia asked if they wanted to take a tour of the old city hall, went and took a tour? So that's the first one. Secondly, if, if Joanne said that the cost was three hundred and fifty thousand to say do it, and if they, if she says their name, then someone could, you know, go after the contractor and say, how dare you say that it's going to be three hundred and fifty thousand whenever we're getting a bid for a million dollars? Why isn't it gonna be a bid for a million? And they're going, you know, there could be attack and backlash. I mean, our citizens, you know, on social media, they had tagged. I mean, David, you know, and I keep bringing it up, but I'm fully disabled and I have been attacked for my disability. So I just, I don't think that she needs to, because you don't, you don't know with these contractors. I mean, one of them could live here in Rome and, you know, he just went and walked it just to, you know, say. I mean, Joanne just said, I don't wanna give it up. Don't, you mean, you never know. So it's not protecting, but she didn't have to do it. I mean, don't let her, yeah, I mean, she don't, she doesn't have to, don't let, let's just move on.
Let me read the relevant provision of the statute that I believe governs here. It's actually twenty-two point oh forty-two and it's section C. It says, "The mayor shall give to the governing body any information and shall recommend to the governing body any measure that relates to improving the finances, police, health, security, cleanliness, comfort, ornament, or good government of the municipality." Period. I believe, Mayor, that would be the governing provision. So it's gonna be a matter of your determining whether this relates to any of those, those items.
And as we've discussed before, I do not, and I'm not trying to protect anybody. The three contractors, if you wanna call them that, were not bidding as contractors. They were giving a ballpark estimate. You can't give an in-depth estimate in ten minutes, twenty minutes, whatever it took.
So just to, just, let me just put this in one yes or no. Mayor, are you gonna tell us who those folks are?
No.
That's all I have to say.
Yes, Ashley.
We're way off topic. Carvin, can we make a motion that, back to on topic, to item number L, that we make a motion to let Cynthia, our city administrator, discuss and sign a lease or for an extension of a lease for one year?
Is that your motion?
Yes, the motion.
And Sam's had his, I'm sorry.
I make a motion that we allow our city administrator to make a motion for a one-year lease.
Sam, Sam has had his hand up for too long.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, little earlier in this discussion, I asked the attorney, should the mayor share with council information about public business? Uh, uh, I'm gonna review your answer, Mr. Hankins, and he said yes. Now, this is clearly public business. That old city hall is public business. The fact that you brought it to a council meeting is public business. That you referenced what their, what the values were that they came up with, this is clearly public business.
And that's why I brought it to the council.
So our attorney has advised that yes, the mayor should share with the council information about public business. And are you still saying, no, you will not share that information?
I did share that information, Sam.
No, ma'am, you have not shared who those people were.
No, the, the law doesn't say who, what, or where. He says, share information. Now, if y'all are saying you don't trust me, that's what I'm hearing. And what, if you're not gonna have the money, if you're not gonna redo it, why do we even need to talk about it?
We are talking about it because it's information that the council deserves to have. The council needs to have this information. We are, we are asking you here to, twenty-two oh four-two, paragraph C, give us the information.
And nothing in there says anything about where the bid, or the estimate. It wasn't a bid, it was an estimate, it came from. I went over and above and gave the council the amounts of the estimate. And what say that I told you it was Charlie Brown? What would you do with that?
I am not required at this moment to tell you what I would do with the information that I had. I'm telling you that I need the information.
Not unless you tell me what for. Yes, Ashley. Ashley, you're on mute, I believe.
Okay. Once again, we're getting way off topic. Whatever the amount was, has changed because the price of lumber has changed. Doesn't matter who it was. So once again, can we make a motion to allow our city administrator to, um, sign a lease extension for the city hall? Can I get a second?
Okay, I'm still discussing this, um, Mr.
We had a motion on the floor, Sam, before that.
And we can have discussion after the motion. So.
Is, is a discussion about the motion?
I'm gonna go back to another question for, uh, our city attorney.
Well, I'm gonna interrupt you first. And is there a second to the motion? We can then go to discussion after the second. If there's not a second, then the motion fails.
Thank you, Elaine.
Okay, Elaine, and I've had trouble seeing her, but Elaine seconded to allow Cynthia to negotiate the lease and has to sign for a, an extension portion, if possible. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mayor. If you wish to have further discussion, you can have further discussion at this point. Or if someone wishes to call the question, then they can call for the vote.
Okay, Shannon has.
I would still like to discuss this topic.
Okay. Let me see what Shannon has a need for.
I'm sorry, I just needed to clarify, was that motion for just one year?
And for an extension, for, to negotiate the possibility of an extension.
For the option for the second year?
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry, Sam, go ahead.
Okay, I have, since we have already established that it's public business, I now would like to ask our attorney, may the mayor be removed under chapter twenty-one for official misconduct?
There is a provision in chapter twenty-one that allows for removal of the mayor, yes.
Do you still not want to give us the names?
Carvin, I need your assistance here. No, I've told, if I, my word is my bond to the people that came and looked at it. I told them I would not share who they were.
Your oath of office is your bond.
Let Carvin answer, please. Sam, I know you'd love to remove me, you know, and go forth with your whatever. But I don't think that's proper at this time. Ashley, while you want to speak, while Carvin reviews something.
I wish we can get Sam removed, because it's getting off topic and it's gonna be a four-hour-long meeting again. So.
We're, we're almost to the bottom.
Then we have, then we have executive session.
Right.
Councilmember Easton, I'm gonna suggest that we take this into executive session so that I can discuss it in confidential terms and discuss it more freely than I feel comfortable as the city attorney discussing right now. And un- under the rules of my professional ethics, I'm actually obliged to try to keep my advice confidential if I think it might in any way harm my client.
Fair enough. We can continue this under executive session.
Okay.
Can we wait till executive session? Can we go forward and then wait to executive session?
There, there is a motion still on the table. It hasn't been acted on one way or the other.
Okay, we have the motion and the second. And Shannon, you want, this is strictly to do with getting a contract for the city, a lease, I should say, for the city hall and put a provision for another extension year. Ashley made the motion, Elaine seconded. Would you call for the vote?
Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Councilmember Ty?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Priest?
Aye.
Councilmember Easton?
Aye.
Councilmember Majors?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, we're going to move on to item M. Discussion and any necessary action regarding failure of the mayor to submit a weekly report to the city council. And that was Sam's, and I can answer that now if you'd like, Sam.
All right.
Okay, the city administrator submits a comprehensive weekly report. Let me talk with the city attorney and the administrator. Thank you.
Well, I don't understand. Talk, you, you agreed, and we have it in meeting minutes, that you would submit a weekly report. And I'm wanting to know why you haven't.
I still need to talk with the city administrator and the city attorney.
Okay, we can discuss that in executive session and then.
No, I need, I need to talk to them separately, not in executive session.
Well, if we're not taking it to executive session, then I have a right to know why, right now, because it's on the agenda, it's discussion. So the question is, you conduct public business as the mayor. And again, twenty-two oh four-two, sub-paragraph C, we have a right to that information as to what you're doing. So I wanna know, what are you doing? You agree?
You want to know as Sam Easton or as the council?
As a city councilman, placed four. Uh, I mean, I can read you that, I mean, Carvin read it earlier. The mayor shall give to the governing body any information.
And I've seen it and I'd listen.
That relates to the improving of finances, police, health, security, cleanliness, comfort, ornament, or good government of the municipality. And I suppose that if during the week, you do none of those things, then there'd be no need for a, a, a weekly report. But I'm thinking even the last one, the good government of the municipality, that, that's probably something that you're doing as the mayor, and I would like to know what that is. And we discussed it in a previous meeting, it's in the meeting minutes, that you would give us that weekly report.
I didn't say when, Sam, I didn't say when. We didn't get into a date, time, and place. But I will be discussing this at length with Carvin and Cynthia.
Weekly is pretty specific. That's a, that's a good when. And so I'm asking you, when on this weekly report that you agreed to, are you going to give us the weekly report?
Okay, Ashley, yes.
Sam, are you just wanting to know when she stops by city hall, signs checks, has a meeting with Cynthia to piggyback off of, you know, meetings with Cynthia to see how city business is being run? You know, goes and talks to, you know, other city employees? I mean, what, what are you looking for as a mayor that she's doing? Goes to drive by the park to see why our park is not being, you know, maintained? You know, why the doors are still being locked? You know, why, you know, the, maybe the mulch isn't being overturned? You know, certain things around our park, you know, isn't being done? What is it that you're looking for, Sam? Because I think us as council member, we need to hold up, you know, as council members, we all have equal roles. Let me see, I just kinda put something together. As all council members, we have equal roles that should show respect to one another. They should also show respect, that much respect and kindness and fairness to our mayor. Uh, Joanne demonstrates honesty, integrity in her judgment to our city that you might need to show, um, to even to our attorney, that I've even addressed to, to not. Um, but all of us, the other council members as well, we all should have the best interest to one another and again, to the best interest of Rome. So, but Joanne is very kind. And so let's show her kindness as well. I don't know what you're looking for in your report. Maybe if you can describe it, then that would kinda help her out there, but.
Ashley, as, as you rambled on for quite a while as to what I possibly could be looking for, um, I believe it is specified in that sub-paragraph C, because you were talking about things that were happening at the, uh, park. So we're talking about health, security, cleanliness. You were talking, comfort. These are all things that you just referenced. Those are the things that are specific to that paragraph. So let's say she, the mayor is, as a hypothetical, going by the, uh, park and she's doing some type of analysis. Wonderful. She's doing her job as mayor, and I'd like to know what the results are of what she found at the park. And since she agreed to a weekly.
Let me in or shit.
Whatever it is she's doing in her role as mayor and the information that she's gathering, the, the, the municipal body, the city, the city council has a right, a legal right to know what that information is, and I'm asking for that information.
Okay.
Don't let you review what my duties are.
You're right.
I have no duties other than kissing babies, and I haven't found a heck of a lot of babies lately. You've given every thing to the city administrator. And we have a good working relationship. I'm certainly not trying to tear that down. But her weekly report tells you what is going on with the city, because that's the decision y'all have made. Now, if I should drive by the park and find something wrong, I do not have the authority to do anything about it. Y'all have stripped all of that. So, yeah, let's, let's move on if we could to the next discussion.
Ms. Joanne, hold on, Ms. Joanne, hold on just a second. Hold on. Sam, you know what? I think as you spoke about it multiple times, I've seen on social media, about Joanne driving around, eating her ice cream, looking at street signs that are missing, about lights being out. So I'll make sure that you noted that about her driving around, looking at every. looking at everything, and notating it. So, but yes, her duties have been stripped. So, a lot of ours too. So, but yeah, we'll make note of it that her and Joanne, I mean, her and Cynthia, a lot of us as well, have a good working relationship. So, thank you, Joanne. You're a wonderful mayor, and.
And I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move. I'm sorry, Jo, uh, well, Elaine's got her hand up. Josh, were you talking? Okay, Josh, go ahead.
I was just saying that Elaine had her hand up, that's all.
Okay, Elaine?
Yeah, I, I just had one question. I'm, I'm a little confused. What, what was stripped? I, I'm not, I'm not sure I understand that.
I'm sorry, you don't understand.
I'm going to interrupt right now and just say we have gotten off topic, and that's not on the agenda, so let's, let's go on.
Okay, we'll move on to executive session here in a little bit. Okay, we're going to end. And are y'all okay with Cynthia? We voted and she's going to negotiate a lease for us. So we're going to end, which is authorizing Cynthia to work with Tech Dot relative to Jake Brake signage along Highway two eighty-seven. Cynthia?
Uh, Mayor, yes, um, this is, um, an issue that you brought up, um, that there used to be signage apparently along two eighty-seven um, regarding, uh, Jake Brake. We do have, I did talk with Tech Dot. We do have ordinance on Jake braking. I mean, technically it's engine braking, but it does say in the ordinance Jake braking. We might want to update that just so it's the proper terminology. But, um, you have the agenda commentary there. Um, what we would need to do, uh, to work with Tech Dot to get that signage. Essentially, um, we can do that. We would enter into an agreement with Tech Dot. Um, and we would agree to, um, install the signs and maintain those signs. Um, the approximate cost of that would be for three signs. One would be, um, southbound on, uh, two eighty-seven as you're coming into the city. One would be northbound, uh, on two eighty-seven as you're coming into the city. And one would be, um, shortly before the exit to, uh, B.C. Rome or one fourteen westbound off of two eighty-seven. Um, would be the three recommended areas to install that signage. Uh, so I guess we're, um, looking to the council to see if that is an action that you would like city staff to take, and if so, that you would authorize me to, uh, work with Tech Dot and, uh, uh, execute that agreement.
Cynthia, I'm glad this was brought up, Mayor. I'm glad you brought this up too. There's, there's nothing I hate worse than hearing the Jake Brakes all the way across town. I mean, those things are loud. So I'm all for Cynthia working with Tech Dot on getting this done and getting them signs out, so thank you.
Do I hear a second?
If we could just do something about the train noise.
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry. Josh, do that.
Just get something done with the train noise.
Well, yeah, that should be one of our new, new projects, I'm saying. Uh, in fact, are you aware, and I may be off topic, I'm sorry. We tried that years ago, and we didn't get anywhere, so now it might be time for another run at it. But Jake Brake, and we've got a motion from Josh, and a second from Ashley.
I am so excited because I live close to this, and so I'm on the other side from Josh, and so thank you, thank you.
And I don't know, Cynthia, I could care less what it's called, but around town, not round town, but Boyd and some of the other towns, it's actually called Jake Brake. So I don't know if the slang is what is more recognized, but whatever you and, uh, Tech Dot come up with, as long as we get them to quit doing it, so.
Jake Brake is a slang term that truckers use. It's actually engine braking because it's using the engine to slow the vehicle down.
Right, but I don't know what we want on the sign. I guess it's my, you know.
It could be engine braking.
Standard, no, no engine braking is what the sign was.
Engine braking is what is recommended.
Okay. Okay, well, we're ready for a vote. Shannon, can you handle one more tonight?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Councilmember Ty?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Priest?
Aye.
Councilmember Easton?
Aye.
Councilmember Majors?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, we've got one more item that's on here, and I'm just curious. It's a relative item. Oh, it's in, uh, discussion and any necessary action regarding fiber optics. I keep getting people saying, when are we going to get fiber optics? When do we get broadband? You know, uh, do y'all have any suggestions as to when, where, or how? I know Elaine lucked out, she got fiber optics, and I think Sam, your community is, it's beginning. I don't know if it's, you're through yet or not. Elaine, yes?
Is this something that, well, OneSource is the, is the group that's over here in Chisholm, and I think that's the same group that's working over in Ellis. Maybe we can reach out to their, um, CEO or whatever, and just ask them what their plans are in general for the, this community?
Is that, can I do?
If I may?
Yes.
I did be, I did talk to them again, just recently, due to the fact of some other issues, and they did express interest if the, any other community inside the city would like to have fiber optic, to please reach out to that co, uh, company.
Is that OneSource?
Uh, it's Hunt Communications.
I'm sorry, spell that again, please.
H-U-N-T.
Hunt, okay. And are they already local somewhere?
They are the companies that did do Chisholm and is in process of doing the Ellis location.
Okay, because both of them have OneSource signs up. So you, do you have a good number for Hunt you could share with me?
No, we could, uh, I can get with Shayna and supply that.
Okay, because I would think they would have had to have had permits to start digging.
Yes, they have right away, they have right away permits, yes.
But the utility side, but what, when they're digging, say, in Ellis, in Chisholm, when they have to have city permits also?
They did, Mayor, they had permits.
Oh, okay, because I, I didn't understand that, and I apologize. So what, now, thanks Cynthia, you got fiber optics for the lease building, and maybe that can be part of the negotiation that you enter into. And you committed to me that along Rob, Old Town Rob, that they Century Link had fiber optics available.
Well, they have it on Main Street now. I mean, again, it's going to be, it's going to be the companies. I mean, it's a free market, and I'm assuming these companies that provide fiber are going to wait for economies of scale to be able to, um, you know, make it worth their while. Um, I know AT&amp;T, when I talked to them at one time about a year ago, they said they would be out here shortly. Uh, Century Link did say probably six months ago that they hope to be able to expand their offerings of fiber to, um, uh, more within Rome. So, you know, people just need to contact the companies, whether it's AT&amp;T, uh, Century Link, NextLink, um, OneElement, you know, whatever, whatever that company is, and see what they can, they can work out. I mean, more than likely, it's going to be a larger company that, you know, has more, uh, it's a big expense that, to install that infrastructure. So it's going to be Century Link maybe, or AT&amp;T, but, um, you know, people just have to reach out to the companies and see what, what is available.
Okay, Sam?
Thank you. Um, it was Leanne McCowsky that organized the effort to work with OneSource and Hunt Communications to get fiber optics put in Ellis. And the way she explained it to me was that they needed to have a commitment from the community, and as Cynthia put it, efficiency of scale. So that, they told Leanne that they could bring fiber to Ellis if she could get seventy-five percent of the homes here to sign a petition committing to buying their product. So that they knew that they would have seventy-five percent of the homes here with, be able to make a sale. A credit, if you will. So if you wanted it in, uh, I mean, when they went to, um, Chisholm, I'm confident that it was the same thing, and I believe Mrs. Priest may be able to speak to that. Oh, get, get a thumbs up.
Yeah, she's a great.
So if, if, if OneSource, Hunt Communications, if we wanted it in Old Town, then I'm thinking they'd probably give the same seventy-five percent if we could get a petition that seventy-five percent of the homes were willing to get the product. Then I'm sure that they would do the same thing in Old Town as they did in Ellis, as they're doing in Ellis as they did in Chisholm.
Well, and I'm thinking.
To buying it.
You know, Crown Point, it's got, you know, about two hundred and fifty houses, give or take. So I would think they would really be looking for, every time you open the internet, or the webpages, I should say, there's a notice, is your internet still working? Or mine went out, or whatever, people are talking. What about Sam and also BuyWell? Would they be under the same pro, possibly? I know you don't know that we talk to OneSource, but.
Well, I know that, I know that, uh, Leanne McCowsky has that contact information.
Okay.
It'd be fairly simple to reach out to Leanne, ask her exact information, and so, but she could give you the, the people to talk to.
Okay, and I appreciate that. Anybody else with any ideas? Okay, we will close out our regular session. It is, we've got eight fifty-three P.M. We will move in ten minutes into executive session, which would make it, okay, Carvin, help me, right after nine, nine oh three. Michelle, did you have something we're missing? Were you trying to, no, okay. So we'll resume, and, you know, there's different call-in numbers for the executive session. So make sure you make that. Thank you.